Have enough time to get the good questions asked. Once again, we have a friend out front has a timer and he will hold up a 15-second card. At the end of those 15 seconds, he'll start hollering or I'll start talking over you or something. So we're gonna try to keep it, keep it in line. Please be respectful of the time. As moderator, I will withhold some discretion to allow rebuttal if, in the event, I feel that one of you needs it and then everyone can respond to those questions as well. Candidates, are you ready? Everybody situated? Okay. We will begin with introductions. Your introductions, please say whatever you like about yourself and what you believe the role of so commissioner in this county. We will begin with Mr. Mike Abernathy.
Good afternoon. That's right. Get it on my chin, you said. So, this afternoon, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be with you one more time, for one more session here. I appreciate folks who've come to Nuble here as well that are running against us. My name is Mike Abernathy. My wife, Shirley, we have three children, eight grandchildren. Thirty-eight years with Georgia Power and Management, and a lot of different things, a lot of different ways of working. Ministered here in Bartow County for 30 years. Socially, I've worked with everybody in this county. I think the things we've got and the things we face are gonna be critical years ahead of us to keep our county, to manage our county. As the Bartow County Commissioner, you're gonna have the sole duty of looking, budgeting, finding work to come into this county, jobs to create for this county, replacing the manager for this county. It's gonna be the most critical years just ahead of us that we have seen, or will see in years to come. I am the man who will help you lead this county in the next four years.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Mike Bearden.
You didn't say take whatever time we can take, did you? You said two minutes, or?
Well, follow this guy, whatever he says. Two minutes, right? He's holding up the card for two seconds.
Hi, Mike Bearden, Republican candidate, Bartow County Commissioner, with the experience to move Bartow forward. I was born and raised in Castle. As a boy, I made mops in the Bonds Mop Factory, washed dishes at Saxon's Restaurant, and sold shoes at Kimmy's Shoe Store on the square. I graduated from Cass High and worked my way through an engineering degree at Georgia Tech and earned a Masters of Business, graduate degree in finance in Georgia State. Along the way, I met my lovely wife, Jan, started raising a family. Today, we're the proud parents of three grown children and seven that call me Papi. That's the best thing about me, is my family. I love my county and I'm concerned about its future. And I wish to give back to it as a public servant, to the place it made me. So I'm running for Bartow County Commissioner for four reasons. First, job attraction. Second, professional management of balanced growth. Third, serious budget control during troubling times. Fifth, enhanced support of family structure for our special place. I want you to know first, I want you to know me. So first, you need to know that I'm a Christian. I'm then a conservative, and then I'm Republican in that order. But I really believe, and I'm convinced, that the most important issue in this race is who has the most experience to move Bartow forward. My experience includes 40 years covering four years of economic development, 14 years of financial management, 10 years of engineering and project management, and 12 of executive organizational leadership. Our county has a bright and a very promising future, and it deserves energetic, experienced, and visionary leadership and technique to take it to the next level full of promises. I'm the candidate that sets itself apart as the conservative in this race. Check my credentials out. I plan to lead by example.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm Mike Bearden.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Tracy Lewis.
Thank you, and thanks to all of you for being here tonight, to the Republican Party and to WYXC for putting the song. I am Tracy Lewis. I'm a lifelong resident of Bartow County. I was born and raised in White, Georgia, the daughter of Dean and Linnell Lewis. And as of about almost six years ago, I moved up to a place I call Pine Log. Some people refer to it now, the new people, as Riddle, but it's still Pine Log to me. I have, my theory basically, as a Republican, is lower taxes. So that means no new taxes. Means less government, which means doing more with less. And then I am a conservative because I'm a Republican, but then I'm extremely frugal because it comes by nature because I am a Lewis, and that's what we do. We squeeze every penny out of every dollar that we can. My faith comes first, my family comes next, and then my career. I'm an all-or-nothing kind of person, and that's what I want to give to Bartow County as servant, as your county commissioner. Give it my all. I'm in the prime of my career. I want to serve the people of Bartow County and I want to earn your vote. My experience sets me apart in the fact that I have a college degree from Berry College, my honors graduate from Cass High School first, and then Berry College in Rome. And then I came home and I realized the need in Bartow County. And I started my own business while also working for my family business. And that business is fast-track delivery warehouse. I know what it's like to make a payroll. I know what it's like to run a business from A to Z, everything that's included in running a business. And I am the candidate that has the experience to run Bartow County Government as a business. And I would like to earn your vote and you help me in realizing Bartows tomorrow together by voting Tracy Lewis for Bartow County Commissioner.
Thank you. Mr. Steve Taylor.
I'm Steve Taylor, candidate for Bartow County Commission. My wife Sandy and I are lifelong residents of Bartow County. Together, we've raised four children and we have seven grandchildren. We own and operate Taylor Farm Supply here in Cartersville. That's a family business that was founded in 1948. We also raise cattle here in Bartow County in the north part of the county. I'd like to thank the Bartow County Republican Party and WYXC for having us here tonight. Jobs, that's the real issue in this election. Right now, the key ingredient to moving this county forward is getting people back to work. As Commissioner, I'll use my personal business experience as well as my extensive experience serving on two authorities to not only bring jobs, but good-paying jobs, quality-of-life jobs. I serve as chairman of the Bartow County Development Authority, and I've been on the Joint Development Authority since its inception. I'm the only candidate for commission who has been directly involved with bringing a billion-dollar company to Bartow County. We've been fortunate to have a visionary like Clarence Brown to serve as our county commissioner in the last 20 years. I was proud to serve as chairman of his campaign. With his retirement, I chose to run as Commissioner. I believe I offered the experience necessary to move Bartow County forward. I believe it is our responsibility to leave things better than we found them. That's progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tony Tidwell.
My wife Lisa and I, we have two daughters, Lindsay and Shelley. Both of them still in college, trying to get them both through by December. Other than for about two years of my life, which was right after college, I've been a lifelong member of Bartow County. And one reason I came back is because I missed the county so much. I graduated from Cartersville High School. Both my daughters graduated from Woodland High School. In 1974, I graduated from Jacksonville State University with a degree in business management, minor in economics. I was hired about Bartow County in 1984 to establish a building inspection department. Keep in mind, the county had never had inspections of Bartow County prior to that, other than the city of Cartersville. So that's quite a challenge itself. Since then, for the past 28 years, I've served as a department head for Bartow County. I've also served as chairman of the Bartow County Resource Recovery Authority in 1993, which is responsible for the acquisition of land and equipment for our current landfill. I've been served as a Bartow County representative on the Housing and Development Authority of Bartow County. I've taught several classes at the North Metro College. I've been a member of the Emergency Response Council for Bartow County. I've assisted in overseeing the damage assessment team for the tornado damage last year. I've served several terms as president of the North Georgia Code Official Association, about 10 years on Board of Directors of the Building Official Association of Georgia, with last year serving as the first vice president. I'm currently serving, my second term is treasurer of Northwest Georgia Inspector Association. I'm telling you that, just to let you know that any time I'm part of something, I want to go all out. And so far, I've been able to get, my peers have respected that. Got a lot more to say, but no time. So I just would like to say I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. By a show of hands, candidates, how many of you have voted early?
Three.
Okay. Well, following in a tradition of the last question, the Bartow County GOP and the Tea Party would like to ask this question, to be answered initially with a yes or a no, and then you may explain. Do you support T-Spots? We will start with Mr. Tidwell.
I love seeing you.
Grab the mic, Forrest. Thanks.
I cannot answer that due to being an active county department head. I'll be glad to talk to anybody one-on-one afterwards and be glad to discuss the pros and cons. I'll be with you though.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Steve Taylor.
That question's came up a lot. And as a candidate for Commissioner, as I've said, this I think is our fourth or fifth forum. As candidate for Commissioner, I don't think it's proper to take a stand on a splosh. And I'll explain some of the things, and the reason I say that is, the Commissioner would have a lot of influence on this if he took a stand. And even though we're not elected Commissioner yet, I just don't think it's really proper to take a stand. I do encourage the people to educate theirselves and remember this tax is for 10 years. And I'll go ahead and say, my wife told me before, just tonight, she said, "Steve, I don't think I'm gonna vote for the T-Spots." And she don't mind me saying that, by the way, but this is a 10-year tax. We need roads in Bartow County, but this may not be the one we need. And there is another option, even though people say there's not a Plan B. I would really, really rather have Bartow County alone on a splosh and let Bartow County manage the money, if that's possible in a couple of years. But once again, I'm not gonna take a stand on it because as a candidate, I think I need to run, just like I was already Commissioner. And a Commissioner's not allowed, just like a department head, a Commissioner's really not allowed.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Ms. Tracy Lewis.
No for the T-Spots because I say no new taxes. I was cautiously optimistic in the beginning because I am in logistics and we obviously need roads. We have got to find a way to fund what we need, not only in our county, but in our neighboring counties. We've got to be a good partner. But the way it's set up, maybe is good, maybe is not. But the timing of T-Spots is not where I need to be to vote for it. So at first, I was cautiously optimistic, but now, no. And I encourage you to look at all the pros and cons of it and you make your own decision because my vote on T-Spots is one, just as yours is.
Mr. Mike Bearden.
No. It's been known for months. I'm delighted to hear that Sandy's listening, delighted to hear that Tracy's listening, I'm delighted to hear that Mike has been listening, and they've changed their position. There may be hope for Steve if we keep talking. There's no, no reason for taxes to do anything but get smaller during this tough time. I'm here, I'm putting myself out here to bring jobs. We've got a lot of struggling families, a lot of folks that are underemployed, unemployed. Higher taxes in any form cost jobs. It was clear early on that T-Spots has a lot of serious structural problems with it. I did a lot of research months ago, and I'm delighted to hear my new friends are agreeing with me more and more on that. Folks, it's tough times in the private sector. The next few years will be tough times in the governmental sector. The answer is not more taxes. The answer is not more government. The answer is not losing local control. The answer is accountability and responsibility in tough decisions. And taking no position or waffling on a position is not a position. No to T-Spots. Yes to lower taxes.
Thank you. Mr. Abernathy.
I think I've been speaking out on this pretty often since I did the first study on it. The answer's no. We don't need this, and I'm gonna answer it so you'll understand because most of you come here tonight, I'm answers. And the answer's no because it's not financially the program we need at this time. We have Barry Louderman here as well, in his position. We're gonna take this back. We need to get new legislation. We need to come back with a different way of looking at this in two years. We need to find something that's worked. We've had five special purpose local option sale tax, 89, 93, 97, 203, and 208. The 208 tax is bringing in $40 million a year off one penny. This tax that we're gonna do with T-Spots, there's just not enough direction for it. There's not enough control for it this time. It's tied back to too many things. I told them this the other day, with the same tax being brought forth at 48 different states at the same time, that's a federal tax that's been pushed down on states. I'm not going along with any federal tax or state tax. We can't afford any more spending. Out of our splosh tax, we can do it with splosh tax. I believe that's the way to go. Darwish is gonna get 3.34% of a splosh tax. U-R-L is getting 4%. Carlsville gets 20.7%. Emerson gets 1.9. Casey gets .95. Wykes 9.95. Bartow County gets 68% of that $40 million on a splosh tax. We only have one penny.
Thank you, sir. My friend has to have a card right here, so if y'all watch him, he'll direct you when you got 15 seconds left. The next question, similar to what you've heard earlier in the evening. Do you feel the county budget is too big or too small? And do you have a goal to increase or decrease the budget, and by how much, during your first four years in office? This question will start off being answered by Mr. Abernathy.
I think that budget's pretty lean right now, but I think there's some places that we could cut that. I'm not gonna say we can cut it a whole lot. I think we're gonna do good. With the tax digest falling like it has, with the broker, thank you, with all the things we're having to go through, we've got another surge of repossessed homes coming on market. We may see 10 more years before you build houses. We've gotta get industry in here, we've gotta get things going. Well, the tax digest is not gonna increase. You can't increase the budget. I can't tell you how much we're gonna be able to cut the budget, but I'm gonna tell you, we're gonna have to cut waste out of it further. At 702 employees, we know we've already cut some, but we're gonna have to cut some more possibly, based on where we stand at the end of the year, what the tax digest looks like, and what revenues coming in. And I believe the first thing we're gonna do is have some good, bad, and ugly meetings. We used to have with a power company, we'd get all those managers, we'd look at what's good, we'd look at what's bad, and we'd look at what's shown enough ugly, and it's going away. And then we're gonna fix some developmental on a line-by-line budget, and that's the only way to change, that's the only way you can look at it. And we've gotta bring on board this new county manager, and we've gotta make sure this financial and economic structure is right for the next four years. And we'll have to do it as a complete circle project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tidwell.
Thank you. As mentioned, I think that the budget as it is now is about as lean as we can get it. And I'm saying that based on all the department heads up, meetings I've been in. We were on a situation where we were trying to replace our vehicles, you know, that need to be sailed every five years or whatever it might be. We have put all that on hold. And you know yourself, if you start paying too much on repairs, that's when it's time to replace a vehicle or equipment, but we've had to put that on hold. As far as the employees, keep in mind, the Commissioner really doesn't have a lot of control over the employees of the other elected officials. If you deduct the ones for elections, magistrate court, Florida Superior Court, probate court, sheriff, juvenile court, tax commissioner, and some of the other legal departments, we end up with 355 full-time employees directly under the Commissioner. And then once you back out those for the road department, which is at 49, used to be 75, you've got 93 in the fire department, keep in mind that's 24/7, go through transit, recreation, EMS, solid waste and water department. That leaves you with 90 full-time employees for the remaining 16 departments in the county. But I do think we need to find some creative ways of maybe trying to save a little more money without having to go up on taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bearden.
Thank you. If I'm honored by being your Commissioner, I'll be very disappointed if in four years the budget is not significantly smaller of Bartow County. We have tough times. It's tough times for the government. We've got a wonderful set of employees, there's 700 people there, 650 or some number who are irreplaceable. Government services employees, and the employee base is crucial. But I'll be confident that there's some that need to find different jobs, there's some that need to find different careers, there's some services that we must decide whether or not they're essential during these tough times. It's not time for government to be growing, it's time for government to be shrinking. It's not time for taxes to be going up, it's time for taxes to be going down. The property digest will go down. We will do a full reassessment of the property tax digestion. It'll go down, my mind, you know what your home values have been doing, that it will be going down, therefore the revenues will go down. Since I'm constitutionally required by the state that if I'm honored by being Commissioner to have a balanced budget, we will have a balanced budget, therefore the budget will go down. We have to find new ways of business leadership to ensure that we're lean, efficient, effective, with compassion, with the basic services that are necessary to continue what you, the citizens, demand. These aren't fun times. No matter which one of us is honored by being Commissioner, it's not gonna be a fun job. That's why I put myself out there. My 40 years of experience, including running budgets for five times larger than Bartow County, sets the table for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor.
You know, it's really popular to say every one of us is gonna cut the budget, cut the budget. The budget's gonna be cut regardless of what we want because that form tax, because of the real estate prices, is really going down. So our future revenues, at least on the ad valorem side, the property tax side, is gonna be less than it has next year, just like this year was less than last year. And I don't know what percentages that is, but it is gonna be less. Now, Mike says there's gonna be about 50 employees that's gotta go. I don't, it's some number. Well, you know, I think if you're gonna say that, you need to tell those 50 employees who they are because that's not really, I think through a transition and working with people, that our county payroll's probably gonna shrink. But let's not leave everybody out there that works for the county in limbo about your job may be in jeopardy right now. So I think we need to be responsible when we make comments about cutting the budget and make sure, these are people's lives at stake here. And let's make sure we do it right, and we're not going, for one, I don't plan on raising taxes. I'm the most fiscally responsible person up here, I think. I run a business, I went through a recession, I kept my business going, it's now profitable, thank God again. But, thank you.
Thank you. We will allow a 30-second rebuttal with Mr. Bearden.
30 seconds?
30 seconds.
30 seconds. The first cut, the first cut will be the county administrator. I will be the county administrator for the first nine months. The first three months will be if I'm honored as Commissioner, starting September, free off the balance sheet. Steve's first reaction was to hire an administrator next month. So he will be raising the budget because he needs somebody who's an administrator that'll help him work through the numbers. I will be the administrator, I will find where the works are, I will find where the efficiencies need to be made, and you'll have a knowledge that the citizens are being responded to, not tied bureaucracy.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis.
Thank you. Yes, I believe the budget is pretty lean right now. The County Clarence Brown and Steve Bradley and Lain McMillan and Kathy and all of those on that team, they have trimmed it pretty good, and it is a great foundation to build upon, but I want to bring this into the 21st century. So I believe in zero-based budgeting and a balanced budget. But also in my plan, in my roadmap to success in first 90 days, that you can check out on www.tracieforbartow.com, it's basically a cycle. If we increase our revenues through economic development by bringing jobs in here and bringing in that tax base and that revenue, and if we aggressively promote tourism and have more tax dollars coming in, and people that are passing through our county, then that's gonna increase our revenues. So with that, if that happens, I believe in four years' time, we can cut the budget by 5% because if we have more revenue. But that doesn't necessarily mean a single employee, there could be some overlap in spending in different departments or different areas of the county. And there's also another way of receiving revenues, and that's in some of the receivables that we have outstanding. I believe that we can dive into that, once in that seat as Commissioner, we can dive into that and see what receivables are out there that are outstanding that we have not collected on, and then work with those people to pay those taxes or pay their bills so we can have that money to operate on also. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question is from the moderator and is almost along the same lines. Candidates, you just mentioned about property tax evaluations and how they potentially could take another dive next year, and I think that's very real. I appreciate your candor. Being also a Commissioner, I've had to deal with it myself, and so this question's gonna be kind of a hypothetical that I had to deal with as a county commissioner. Last year with our budget, we did see a 7% reduction in values, and you may see the same next year. No one really knows. But if you do, if you see a 7% reduction in your digest and in your budget, property taxes coming in, you're gonna have to make some very tough decisions. So my question to each candidate is if you see, let's just say 7%, and you know that 7% can't be made up easily, let folks here today know what are your priorities and what will you do to fill that gap of 7%? And we'll start with Mr. Tidwell.
That is a tough one to deal with. I think you have to go in and look at those services that are being provided that not all the citizens of the county really use, maybe it's just a small percentage. You may have to look at eliminating some of that or lower some levels of service somewhere, but you can't keep the same level of service with lesser money. So we've got, I just committed a tough statement, and I just went out.
Did you see if you got the mic?
You've traced it.
Tracy, you got the mic? Thank you.
We cut it off. They cut it off on you.
We're already saving money.
There we go.
There you go. But you know, everybody, nobody wants to raise taxes. And there was a question asked me before, back at the very beginning, would you be for raising taxes? No, I don't wanna raise taxes. But how many of you people want to keep the same level of service that you have now? I mean, we would do everything we could to try to find a way to cut out some of those expenses that are unnecessary to try to keep them go up on taxes and still provide the same service. But that's just where we have to, as a group, decide, you know, what do we want in the line of services for Bartow County? Thank you.
All right. Mr. Taylor.
Well, one thing we're not gonna do is borrow money to get through the year. We're not gonna raise taxes. So those two are not options as far as I'm concerned. That's, I'll never sign a pledge to never say that I'll raise taxes because I don't know what the future holds. But those are my two, die hard, take to the grave, try as hard as you can not to borrow money, not to raise taxes. But that leaves one thing, and Tony just hit on it. We may have to cut services. And cutting services is not something that this county is. We've got things going on in this county right now, and we've got a lot of great programs going on, but a few years ago, we didn't have them. I'm not gonna say we'd have to cut them permanently, but sometimes, it's just like running a household budget, sometimes you have to make do with what you've got. And whatever happens, and it's likely that the real estate values will fall again next year. That's highly likely. In fact, it's more probable than not. So we need to be prepared for it. And I think the next Commissioner, when he takes office, will need to start planning immediately, just in case that happens. But raising taxes, no. Borrowing money, no. Possibly cutting services, as Tony just said. That's the only option that I can say. Thank you.
Mr. Bearden.
Raising taxes, no. I did sign the pledge. I'm the candidate up here who did. Borrowing money, no. Cutting services during tough times, I regret, yes. Zero-based budgeting, full performance review from the ground floor of everything, everything is in play. Each one of these candidates, if they read the state law that empowers us as Commissioner, whichever one of us is honored by being there, is required to do that. It's not an option. We are required to evaluate every dollar for effectiveness and efficiency. I take everything in my life serious, and that's what it would be. I would be obligated, and we will do that. And what we'll do is have a very thorough process of evaluating, starting with the top of the government down over a period of time, to ensure that during these changed times, that we're doing what's necessary and not doing what's not. The last 20 years have been a spoiling time on many levels. Government has gotten accustomed to things that aren't normal. We as families have gotten accustomed to things that are not normal. Things are getting closer to what normal used to be, but transitions are hard, change is tough. That's why I'm out here. I love my county, I want to use my experience to ensure that those decisions are made. I love my county, I want to use my experience to ensure that those decisions are made properly, wisely, in the best interest of the citizens.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis.
Thank you. Brother Mike, I signed that pledge also to not raise any taxes, and I do realize that in a business, I've always even given bids or preparing for your budget, you prepare for best-case scenario, worst-case scenario, and hope to hit somewhere in the middle. So, if we are faced with the challenge that you were as commissioner, then the number one priority of our government tax dollars is public safety for our citizens. So, one thing that would not be cut, for sure, is law enforcement, firemen, and EMS. Other services may need to be looked at and be selected, or maybe less hours or something, or whatever we need to have to do. That is a part of my first ninety-day solutions, if you look at my website, is to meet with each department head in the first ninety days and find ways to trim waste. So, a goal of mine has already been to look at it and trim five percent at least. So, if we have the best-case scenario, and we have more revenue coming in, and then we have more money, and we have already cut it five percent, then maybe some people that are due, long overdue raises can get raises, such as law enforcement and firemen and EMS, or whoever it may be. But there is a way to fill that gap, and bringing in revenue is another way of doing that, so thank you.
Thank you all for answering that question. Obviously, like I said, we had the same problem, and the next question's going to hit at some of the solutions, but we've got one more person over here.
You're taking off my time for that comment?
I think they cut your mic off too. There it is, there it is.
No mic's cut off.
No mics cut off. All right, Mr. Abernathy, go ahead.
I'd like to share with you this, since we started, I told you that I feel like we're going to see a double dip recession next year. Economically, I think you're going to see some real hard times. I've said the first thing you're going to have to do when you go into office up here is you're going to have to audit the books, you're going to have to look at what you've got, you're going to have to create two budgets. You're going to have to create one budget that stands as a normal rate for the normal things that we have income coming in for, then you're going to have to create an emergency budget that you go to. And we did that, my last project that I worked on was three hundred eighty-five million dollars, and that last budget with Georgia Power was a big budget, it was a big project. And we had to cut that budget, re-look at that budget every week to make sure we were on target. We had a Monday morning meeting, and we made sure we were still on target. We had to watch it daily. In hard times like this, you're not going to maybe just walk in and say one time, you got this budget covered. Every month, you're going to have to be on top of, every week, you're going to sit on top of this budget and watch it. First thing I'm going to do is park four hundred automobiles. A whole lot of people driving county vehicles across the county line, a whole lot of people driving vehicles home. When I worked with Georgia Power, you drive your vehicle down there and get the Georgia Power vehicle, you work, you get back in that thing, you go home. Now, I know we've got emergency vehicles, we've got folks that need to have access to vehicles around the clock. We need to stop wasting money, so first thing we're going to do, we're going to get ready, we're going to get rid of the pleasure and the feel-good items.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. And this follow-up question, we're going to try to dig into a little specificity, I'm trying to get you guys to maybe go into a little detail here, if you can, just so the audience members can see the differences between the candidates. The next question is, one of the ways that local governments around the states have limited the scope of government is through public-private partnerships. Are there any duties or services Bartow currently provides that you think could be done more efficiently by the private sector better than government? And we will start with Mr. Beard.
Forty years of my experience has taught me that until you wear someone's shoes, you really don't know how they fit. Answering that with specificity without getting into the job is the same answer that I would give to Mr. Taylor in his remark earlier, absolutely not details, because I don't know until I get in there what the other issues are that relate to a specific decision. That said, everything's in play, folks. Constitutionally, the commissioner is required to evaluate everything from bottom down. Absolutely, there are models in every part of government that's been proven across the country that can work in privatization. But on the other side of the table, those same models have failed in other places. If I'm honored by being Bartow County Commissioner, I commit to you my full energies, the energies that you've seen on this campaign, where I have no weight of a going but full speed, that you'll have someone who's looking at everything from the ground floor up with your interests at heart. We have a promising future. We must make proper decisions to ensure that we bring growth through jobs. Jobs come to very positive, aggressive, promising places, that's what we are. Dealing with privatization's a complex issue, which I don't look forward to, but I will at all scopes.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor.
I can't believe I'm going to agree with Mike Beard on something. Until you sit in the commissioner's seat, I don't see how we could responsibly say what we are going to cut. And as I said before, there's human lives involved, but our first obligation is to the taxpayer, and that's our main obligation, and that's who we work for, is the taxpayer. And I'll always keep that in mind, and that's why I think I'm the best candidate for this job. The taxpayer comes first, the taxpayer's the job, the taxpayer is almost everything. That's the only reason government exists, is to serve the taxpayer. But saying that, unless you're a commissioner, unless you're sitting there, you don't really know what you're going to do until you're faced with these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll restate the question, just in case somebody forgot it. This question pertains to, what ways do you think local government around the states, well, local governments around the states have limited the scope of government through public-private partnerships, working with the private sector? Are there any duties in Bartow County that you think could maybe be done better in the private sector than by government? And that question will be followed up by Mr. Tidwell.
For being a county department head and sitting in all the meetings, knowing what all these different departments do, the kind of service they provide to the citizens, I don't know of any departments at this time that we would, that I would consider privatizing. And one reason I say that, when you start privatizing, you lose control over what's being done. I know some areas have privatized building inspections, that's what I'm in. If you do that, then they pay a lot higher fee for the services that are rendered and for investigating complaints and things like that. So, you know, it saves the county money, but then again, it's going to cost you, the citizens, more money when you need that, which is almost like another tax. What's been brought up about the ambulance service, I can't see that. Those people, when they're out there, that work for the county, they are out there because they're part of our Bartow County family, they care about us. I'd want to cut, I'd have to try to find a way to cut services somewhere else before I'd want to try to privatize.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis.
Thank you. Public-private partnerships can be a win-win situation, dependent on the situation and not knowing exactly until I'm in the driver's seat. It's hard to say, but I do know that there are government bonds, go-bonds, that are available at very good interest rates for some public-private partnerships. There are some grants that are available at very good interest rates, public-private partnerships. But one of the ways that I do, I haven't, but was blessed with the entrepreneur mind and figuring out ways to make money and new ways and thinking outside the box, one of the things that I want to do, and I'm kind of turning this around and getting back to the public-private, is in the first ninety days, make the freeport tax one hundred percent exempt. That is going to affect the Bartow County's M and O, Maintenance and Operations Budget, two hundred and fifty thousand out of sixty-two million, or sixty-four million, that's peanuts. But where it's going to affect, and the school system is about the same, five hundred thousand out of a hundred and twenty-plus million budget. We could cut that in the first ninety days with a M and O budget, for sure, I know we can, two hundred and fifty thousand. For the school systems, that's where there could be a public-private partnership, where these industries that are already used to pay a one hundred percent, now they're only having to come up with sixty-six percent, and you be a partner with the Derswell High School or Cass High School, and you receive some accolades and become a good community partner, and that could be a good public-private partnership to replace the freeport tax with the school systems. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Abernathy, I didn't forget about you this time.
At present time, we have this already going on at the county, and the accounting billing is being done for EMS to help get our receivables back in, pull what they owe out now. So, that's a good place where that's working at right now. And so, they're doing the billing for us and getting that money back in. On the water and sewage side, we're doing contractors come in, help with the roads to towns, help with sewage supplies, get them done, to get them through. Sometimes, you're going to have to have the private sector to come in, and you don't need to count it out, that we can't use them with what we've got to save money. And those are good ideas. We have seen privatization in garbage routes in Derswell, now the rates are going out the roof, and people are screaming and hollering, because the first thing you do is you sell your garbage truck, and then you don't have anything to get away to combat what you've already done. We have got to have a short-term view and a long-term view to make sure that we do not sell ourselves short. If we sell all our ambulance services out, form that out, we might, I might show you a two-million-dollar savings on books this year, and then three years from now, y'all will run me off on a grievous poll because I've sold all the ambulances, and ain't a way to get them back, and we can't afford it in a downturned economy. So, we've got to really have a long-term and a short-term view of what we're doing, and we must have the big picture in mind at all times. And you cannot give away the very equipment that we're using to get this job done. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is kind of particular, when it comes to supporting current businesses that already are in Bartow County. Would you support a local ordinance that would give local Bartow County businesses a hand-up in competing for county work? Now, now, just to be specific, we all know that if it's a construction job, it has to go to the low bidder, no doubt about that. But for services, counties get specific leeway by the state government to, let's just say, you could have a two percent leeway. So, if you were sitting there, you're looking at different bids, and let's say Bartow County janitorial supply versus Atlanta janitorial supply, both submit to clean up the county business, county buildings. Would you support an ordinance that would benefit a local business over a non-local business, knowing that it may cost taxpayers a little bit more? And we'll start off with Ms. Lewis.
Thank you. Great question. Yes, I would support that. I don't know what the magic number is, you mentioned two percent, but I am a fan of the Buy Bartow initiative at the Carstle Bartow Chamber of Commerce, but what I mean by that as a fan is I shop Bartow first, and I look for the quality and the price, and if it's the best here, that's what I go for. And so, we have great service industries and vendors here in Bartow County, we have the good workers here, and yes, they need to be looked at first, and that is definitely something I would support as an ordinance, as the Bartow businesses having a hands-up, and us keeping our Bartow people, our Bartow residents with a job. I mean, the unemployment is still almost nine percent, it's eight point something, but that would be one way that government can help with the job situation, is to hire local vendors. And so, the magic number, I don't know what it is, if it's two percent in Hall County, maybe it needs to be two percent in Bartow County, but yes, I would wholeheartedly support that.
Thank you. Mr. Beard.
Sir, I can stand to be corrected, you're a lawyer and a city commissioner, but I am quite confident that there are ways for construction jobs to be offered, other than low bidder, with a quality-based evaluation system whereby you give credit for certain other set of side purposes. If it's properly structured under the laws, you can also do construction jobs. I stand to be corrected if you differ, you're the lawyer and commissioner, but I've competed across the southeast, running very large engineering organizations and construction projects of most any type you can talk about. I've been very disappointed that specifically the structures and the capital improvement program that we've really been aggressively going under the last four, five years under the Industrial Development Authority in the county has not had set-asides. Every contract that's been major or offered has not had a Buy Bartow First initiative in there, and that's been disappointing during this period of time where there's been a lot of money spent, including where we sit tonight. We need to restructure our procurement system whereby there are set-asides in there, where there are incentives given or by local. I'm very thrilled that the Chamber of Commerce has started in the last year a Buy Bartow program, which has provided a lot of impetus behind it. Certainly, services and other ways, there are creative ways to do that. As Tracy said, though, quality and service are paramount, but you can put in evaluation systems whereby you give credit for local people, and absolutely, we've got to do that, there's no question.
Hi. Thank you. Mr. Taylor.
I most certainly would be for a system in place that would maybe raise the limit to maybe two to three percent. I think money spent in Bartow County, by the county, to county businesses, it turns over and multiplies like six or seven times. In the end, it don't cost taxpayers, it keeps money in the county, and it's a bonus for taxpayers, so to speak. We keep one business open in Bartow County that might have missed a bid over two percent, or if we keep one construction job in Bartow County that missed a bid by one percent, some of these jobs are less than one percent, a local contractor gets knocked out, that is not good business to let it go outside the county. You might say, well, it costs the taxpayers dollars. It costs the taxpayers dollars when local businesses go out of business. It costs the taxpayers a lot of dollars, and we've been talking about jobs, 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 and that's, when local, small businesses go out of business, because our county maybe didn't spend that extra one or two or three percent to give them the contract, that is irresponsible, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Abernathy.
I want to go back to your question first, because the way you worded it, the answer would be no. I am for putting our people to work first, have been from the rear where it goes, but you said you cannot spend, you could spend the two percent and we pay extra. I believe you can get it done for the same price. Here's what I want to suggest, a re-look at the way we're buying. Give our people a preference, give our people the option. I've said I wanted seventy-five percent of our people working on jobs, we've got outside contractors, I want our people working, if it's labor force and not technical, I've got to quickly do this. We put out our bids now, they come back with sealed bids. When they come back with a sealed bid, that's the end of whoever's at one percent over. I say, open the bid, open it up, bring it into a room, everybody's there, you've sent your sealed bid, then we open the bids and we start it. And you're five percent over, you want to drop your bid, can you come down? These contractors have got to be able to get the work done, they've got to be qualified people, but we need to change our bid process, we can drop the price, we can get the work for them out here at home. I may have a CO Ted will sit over here that can handle this job and get it done, but he's fighting a sealed bid that sometimes gets yanked up before it ever gets there, and we need to open the bids up, and I almost have a bid process that becomes like an auction process, but we could save hundreds of thousands of dollars by not sealing our bids, and when we come into that room, we open those bids, and we say, low boy, let's go, and whoever can drop that price down, and we put to work our people by giving them precedence.
Thank you. And we're running close on time, so we're going to go ahead and, I forgot you, see, I'm trying to go out of order to make sure I mix it up, and I always forget somebody when I try to do that. Mr. Tidwell, I apologize, how about?
Yes, I'd be in favor of it, because as I said, stated, those people, even though it might be costing the taxpayers two percent more, and it depends on how much is being done, those people will, that work in Bartow County, then would have the money to be able to maybe purchase some of these houses sitting on the market, that when they go to buy groceries or vehicles, the taxes we're getting off, it's going, I mean, from that, it's going to be multiplied, and we're not, it's going to be helping the county out overall. I did talk to Mr. Brown several months ago, because I was very concerned about that, couldn't we require like a five percent increase for the out-of-town contractor to have over a local contractor? That time, he said, no, maybe it's because we didn't have that ordinance in place, or it might be because of a particular construction job, but he did mention about a paving job one time, where a local contractor was just a little bit higher than the lowest bid, gave it to the local contractor, and then the county had to go in still and pay that difference to that contractor without them having to do anything. So, we don't want to get ourselves in a mess like that. Yeah, if we can get it worked out and be legal about it, I think it'd be fantastic.
I'll forget anybody. All right. Going into closing, everyone will get two minutes to do closing. If you could, also, it's part of the questions submitted by, to the Bartow GOP, please distinguish yourself and give us what sets you apart from the candidates, and also include that in your closing. And we'll start with Mr. Mike Abernathy.
I believe the one thing that separates me is I do have a management degree, and I do have a business degree, thirty-eight years in budget, thirty-eight years of working, thirty-eight years of dealing with people and helping people, and I believe I have the I believe I have the character, I have the personality, and I can work with any group. If you run up in there, I'm going to be the same way today that I am tomorrow. I believe we're going to make a plan, we're going to work a plan, we're going to get our plan done. I believe that we're going to have things, we want to take care of our people. I've said all the time that the reason I'm running today is not for jobs, jobs, jobs. What we're going to have is somebody that's willing to take care of the people of Bartow County. And out of that reason, and out of that heart, that you want to take care of the people of Bartow County, you will develop what you need to have people in every area, including the jobs. You'll want to do your best to get the jobs, you want to do everything else. But the underlying difference between me is a social issue, who I am and what I am, and what can I bring to you as far as being the best in social work that you could have anywhere. I can go get those jobs, we can get it done, and we can have the best Bartow County there is. And I appreciate your opportunity to be here and be sharing this night with you.
Thank you, Mr. Abernathy. Mr. Mike Bearden.
Three things come to mind. I've done job attraction across the country. I don't just talk about it, I have done it. That's the reason I'm in this race. That's what prompted me to put myself out there months and months ago, is because I have an obligation to do the best thing I can do with my life. It's not about me, it's about the county. Secondly, my experience spanning virtually all aspects that touch county government, financial management, engineering project management, economic development, executive leadership distinguishes me, as opposed to the experience that my esteemed competitors have. And then, thirdly, my philosophy, my love for the county doesn't distinguish me. We all love our county. We're all up here for good reason. You need to pay respect to each one of these fine folks. But my philosophy in terms of long-held beliefs in limited government, enhanced personal responsibility, and lower taxes is not something new. It's not something I've adopted recently. It's something that's been ingrained in me from years of hard work, determination, and understanding about what makes our country great. And we have opportunities in our county that are remarkable, a promising future, with the right leadership, the right decisions. We have a special place, even more so than what we have today, at a different level. I'm Mike Bearden, with the experience to move Bartow forward, and I'm putting myself out there to fulfill that promise of our county and take us to the next level. I need your vote. Look for your support tomorrow, the day after, July 31st, and then again, August 21st. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bearden. Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, and thank you again for taking the time and being so interested in this race. We are all working hard to earn your vote, but what distinguishes me and what sets me apart, well, number one, I'm the woman in the race. Number two, one of my slogans, I'm the right age, the right energy, the right ideas at the right time. I'm in the prime of my career. I'm 45 years old. I want to serve the people of Bartow County as, if you look in our history of Bartow County Commissioners who have gone in office, have been around their mid-40s, with exception of Wayne Self. He was 28. I have the right ideas, I have plenty of ideas of bringing in tax revenue besides the individual burden of property taxes. And in the right time, I believe it's our generation's time to lead. You look at a lot of the small businesses in our county that are family-owned, the people that are my generation are leading now, and their parents are either retired or semi-retired, and turning the keys over and letting them lead. It is our time to lead, and that's one of the things. And also, I have been making tough decisions throughout my career with fast-track delivery, doing everything from A to Z. Dispatching for years is one of the top 10 stressful jobs that you would find. So I would be dispatching 20 different drivers and servicing 150 different clients in the same day, plus having to go out to a chamber event or a networking event and representing my business and trying to grow my business, doing all this from my hip, from my vehicle was my office. I've also been leading in Bartow County and making tough decisions. I was chairwoman of the Cardinal Bartow Chamber of Commerce in 2004, when we had to stand up and say, we need Toyo Tire for the jobs. And that's what I did as chairwoman of that. And I've also been representing Bartow County throughout the nation, in Washington DC, speaking to our senators and our congressmen. And I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Steve Taylor.
I'd like to thank the folks that provided this opportunity for us to speak to the voters. This is an important election in Bartow County. We're the largest county in the country with a sole commissioner. The next commissioner must make good choices and sound decisions. We do a lot of things right, but as commissioner, I will build on what we have so future generations can benefit. What separates me from these other candidates, as Mike said, that these are worthy opponents. We've been running for five months, and to the best of my knowledge, no negativity at all. So I'm going to have to take my hat off to these people. As I've said many, many times before, these are quality people. I'm just your best candidate for county commissioner. Business experience counts a lot. And for 30 years, I've ran my family business. I've been on both development authorities. I'm chairman of the County Development Authority, and I think we're on the verge of bringing some companies in this county that, through the Industrial Development Authority, through the new park that we've got up at Cass Y, other companies in the county are ready to expand. So I think that with business experience and my experience on these authorities, I am the best candidate. And I ask that you would vote for me July 31st, or earlier. You can go tomorrow and vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. And Mr. Tidwell.
Let me put this scenario out to you. If you own a carpet mill, and you need to hire a plant manager for that carpet mill, are you going to go out and hire someone who's an excellent manager for an insurance company to run this carpet mill, or are you going to try to look for someone who is familiar with that carpet industry? All these are fantastic, good business-minded people. The county business is different from private business. There's a lot of times when I've had to deal with people that, if I was in private business, I'd say, you know, I don't need your business, go somewhere else. I can't do that. They are a taxpayer, and I have to bend over backwards trying to deal with these people, and I think I've done a good job with it over the years. So what separates me? I've got 28 years of experience as department head with Bartow County. I'm dependable, accountable, responsible, and I'm conservative. I'm always under budget. The commissioner and Mr. Bradley have always made mention that, they know I don't ask for anything unless I need it. And that's why I appreciate your vote this year. And I really would like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and vote early. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we hope you enjoyed it. Hope you had an informative evening. Please give a round of applause to the tax commissioner candidate for Bartow County.